Hi.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number four, the acceptance of the donations. We have a good list again tonight, so we'll start with the backpack program. We have fifty-five dollars from Bethany Lutheran Church. We have two thousand seven hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents from the American Lutheran Church. For the baseball program, we have twenty-five dollars from Schramm Law Office. Two-hundred-and-fifty, sorry, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars from Schramm Law Office, twenty dollars from Natalie Bermaneister, fifty dollars from Mark and Stephanie Rudman, one hundred dollars from Franklin and Judeine Erickson, twenty dollars from Ronald Clausen, twenty dollars from Wayne and Janet Rudman, seventy-five dollars from Miller Selner, a hundred and fifty dollars from Hy-Vee. Uh, for other donations, we have three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars from NAM Design for the softball team. We have six-hundred-and-fifty dollars from Midway Farm Equipment for the high school student senate tailgate. We have three-hundred-and-fifty dollars from Todd and Mary Catherine Franz for Eagle Achievement Projects for Brooklyn Roll. We have six-hundred-and-forty dollars from Ducks Unlimited Minnesota, Chapter Forty-One for FFA. We have four-hundred dollars from Mary Hogan for girls basketball and four-hundred dollars from Mary Hogan for girls volleyball. Could I get a motion, please?
I move approval with a lot of thanks to all the individuals involved.
I'll second it with many thanks.
Alright, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, next up is open forum. Mrs. Frank?
No one for open forum.
Alright. Number six is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
I move approval.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seven, our administrative report. We'll start with the preschool, Mr. Barfick.
Thank you, good evening. Alright, just some quick business for you tonight. Uh, some things that have happened in the past since we talked last time. Bridges Preschool and Head Start visited our kindergarten classes and they toured the elementary school. It's a nice opportunity for those kids to see where they're coming. Also, the shock on their face when they saw me at the elementary school too. They're like, "Mr. B, you're here too?" It was great. Um, we had our elementary track meet last week and um, that was, it's been great weather for that, so um, you know, we didn't even have a whole lot of sunburns out there, it was just beautiful. Uh, we had our second graders go on their circus field trip, third graders went on their county field trip recently. They toured the courthouse, city hall, law enforcement center, and a few more places. Um, it's a good chance for our third graders to get to know a little more about their community and their county. Um, we have class lists being made to best serve our students for next year. Letters is finally finished up for us and our staff averaged ninety-five percent on the mastery. So on the test of the whole entire thing, our staff averaged ninety-five percent. I thought that was amazing. They worked, I know I've told you all this before, but they have worked so hard on this, put, they've really dedicated themselves to learning this material. It's very good. Um, MCAs are done for our third and fourth grade students and we are kind of in the midst of some end-of-the-year STAR and Fastbridge testing, so we can see how our students have grown and changed over the years. Uh, the, the year, I'm sorry. Things are coming up. We have, we are in the middle of field trip season, so we have more field trips coming up. Um, our fourth graders are going to visit the middle school, so that, much like the preschoolers to the kindergarten, our fourth graders get to see what's coming up in their future next year. We have Terrific Kid today and tomorrow. Um, Blame It On The Wolf is a play that our fourth graders do every year, so they work on it, they get parts, they're working on um, you know, using their, their strong reading voices and their fluency and all the, all the skills that they've been working on. We have Career Day where we have a whole bunch of community businesses coming in and our students rotate through to see what the different businesses from our local area uh, do. So we'll have people, you know, doctors, lawyers, um, police and firefighters, we have um, barbers, really like any kind of thing. We have people representing all different businesses come in and they get to talk to our kids about what they do in our community. So that's coming up uh, on May twenty-second, and then we have a little end-of-the-year fun water day on the twenty-third. Some other news that I put in here for you as we kind of start to wind down the year. Um, I asked Mr. Travis Janzen uh, to tell me a little bit about our dojo points and dojo store. And you know, this year was our first year with him. We used to do Eagle Pride Cards and uh, we couldn't really keep track of it. Dojo points we can keep track of, and our staff has given out four-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-two dojo points. It sounds like a lot, and it is, and that means four-hundred-sixty-one-thousand times our staff has noticed our students doing something amazing. So, I just think that's great, so. Um, and you know, for our staff, of course, we have days that are rough too, you know, we have things that don't go the way we expect them to, but it's important that we do keep recognizing all these positive things that our kids are doing, and four-hundred-sixty-one-thousand times they've been recognized. So, awesome. Um, and also, of course, last week, Teacher Appreciation Week, the teachers and staff at Bridges and uh, the elementary school, just, they are the best. They've been great for me this year, great for the kids, anything that needs to be done, if they see a need, they fill the need. They just go above and beyond, so really appreciate those folks. Any questions for me?
Alright, thank you. Next we'll do the administrative report for the middle school. Mr. Nielsen?
Hey, good evening. Happy May. We're uh, I get reminded every day of how many days of school are left by the students when they walk by me in the hall, so uh, it's uh, it's amazing time of the year, lots going on. Again, I want to reiterate, we did celebrate our teachers and we celebrate our teachers every day. Uh, we appreciate them so much and we have so many wonderful staff members within our buildings here at school. I can speak for all three of us and everybody up here, as we go in and out of classrooms each and every single day, the teachers really, really work hard for students. It's unbelievable what they do each and every day, so. Also wanted to acknowledge uh, Jessica Matt and uh, Jackie Larson, as we celebrated them in School Nurse Appreciation Day on May seventh. Great help, great support, and they are extremely busy, I noticed too, this time of year, when the weather gets nice. We've had a couple playground and, you know, things like that happen, a bloody nose, bonking into one another, so. It's not just during the winter during that, you know, cold and flu season and upset tummy time, now, now we move into a different time of the year here and uh, they do amazing work and they're always such a s- great, great help. Hey, on Friday, May ninth, fire drill, mandatory drills, they're all done for the school year. Uh, we got that taken care of at two-thirty. And uh, I was timing, I, there were some things we were doing, Mr. Joyce might say something different, but it might have been one of our slower times getting out of the building. It wasn't bad, but just so everybody is aware, we could have been about thirty seconds faster. We had a couple stragglers, I don't know if they knew it was like the last practice one or what, but uh, about thirty seconds off. Not quite on pace for some of our record times that we had, but uh, we're done, we're done with them, so. They know how to exit the building if there's a fire. The bike fleet has been here, Officer Dana has been busy, our PE classes have been busy. Again, amazing weather to have the bike fleet here. They are out uh, where the buses pick up and drop off during uh, during the day, riding like crazy, doing all kinds of things, in and out of the cones, kids riding bikes that haven't ridden bikes before. Absolutely incredible stuff. It's really cool to have that bike fleet and that trailer here and all of the bikes and helmets available for these students to go outside, learn bike safety and practice, and again, kudos to everybody doing that, Officer Dana, the PE teachers, everyone involved there. Our fifth graders, they took a field trip and I, I would have thought we would have been faster with that fire drill because they weren't in the building when we had that, so I'm not, but at any rate, they were at the Minnesota Arboretum on Friday. And again, amazing weather, some of the pictures are on Facebook, a whole amazing, great, great trip, kids have a lot of fun on that. Very, very impressed. The teachers are impressed year after year going there, so fun trip for those fifth grade students. Uh, again, I want to recognize the Safety Patrol, they've been out busy too, keeping kids, because there's a lot more people walking and riding bike. Our Safety Patrol does a great job each and every single day. We'll be recognizing them at Awards Day on Friday too, when that comes up along with many other great students. Uh, STAR testing window, of course, is open right now, MCAs have all wrapped up, now we're doing our STAR reading and uh, math. This is a great one, this is the one that we really focus on, to be honest with you, as a district, and uh, not that we don't focus on the MCAs. We do for sure, but this is nice because of course you know that we test in the fall, the winter, and the spring, and we get an awful lot of great data from this, okay? So that's open until the twentieth, and we'll really be breaking that down. Again, May twentieth, concert time, moving on quickly. Busy time of the year, we've got some great middle school concerts coming up, along with some other things that'll take place in the Nest. A lot of times the stuff is in the Gold Gym, just because of setup and everything else. This will take place in the Nest on May twentieth, fourth and fifth grade, six P M., sixth through eighth grade, seven-thirty P M., hope to see some of you there. May twenty-eighth, our seventh grade students are headed to the Capitol in the Minnesota History Center. Great, great field trip. We've got a lot of people going. I'm gonna stay back this year. I went last year, it was awesome last year again. Students did a fantastic job, we expect the same. We've got a lot of staff members, adults, parents, thank them, that volunteer that'll be heading up there on May twenty-eighth. On May twenty-ninth, our final student day and uh, community cleanup dismissal at uh, twelve-thirty-five tomorrow morning. Mr. Joyce and I will be going over stat, with staff members at our staff meeting, kind of what Community Day will look like uh, and everything that'll go into there. Eagle Pride has been a great help in setting that up. And then May thirtieth will be a teacher checkout day, of course. Uh, some festivities in the morning for about an hour and then working the rest of the day and checking teachers out and so on and so forth. And I just wanted to, just a last little note there, this year, you know, fifth through eighth grade, we decided not to take Chromebooks home. They stayed in the classroom, they stayed in the cores. Um, we have found out logistically, you know, maybe the first two to three weeks, we got used to it a little bit and teachers got used to it, students got used to it. We're finding out it was a great thing. We really feel like it was a good move, it was a good thing. Um, as I've been going around talking to students, talking to teachers, I have heard it from families more so than anyone, to be honest with you about that. It was a great move not to have. Not that if students don't have homework or get bu- whatever it might be, they can check out a Chromebook and bring it back the next morning, bring it back to that core classroom uh, and get it back to the cart so it can be used for the day, so that still can occur, but it was a good move and I, I don't know, is George still here? Ryan? How many breaks in the middle school, do you recall? Yeah, we were over a hundred last year and we have less than twenty just Chromebook breaks, things like that. So not just for that, but it was a good move and we have had unfortunately more copies being made because kids are writing a little bit more now, but that's a good thing, that's a good thing. Thank you very much for the May report. Any questions for me? Can I go rogue here? I'm sorry, I know it's gonna be a long meeting, but I gotta talk just real quick. Hey, I just want to point out, sorry, we, this time of the year gets, gets a little bit difficult at school, right? The natives get a little restless, things like that, but we are celebrating some small wins and things like that. And I need to share something that happened today uh, with some eighth grade students. Uh, there was a little bit of conflict today with some eighth grade students and I won't say anything but girls, okay? Well, I did say, sorry, okay? Okay, at lunch it wasn't a, there, there, there was a tough situation where some people were very unhappy with one another. Um, and, and you know, I, I'm out in the halls and talk to students frequently, this and that and everything else. Of course, like Mr. B said, like Mr. Joyce said, not every day is perfect. I know, we, we like to be all positive and rah-rah, but there are things that go wrong with students when, you know, three-hundred-and-sixty-five middle schoolers, right? There's a lot of changes going on in their lives and things like that. The conflict took place at lunch and I just wanted to point out, and I'll make it a little bit shorter than uh, than what I should, but we got together a, an hour later and kind of had a restorative circle with a, with a few students. And I want to say, we, the restorative circle went so well and it absolutely shocked me with one of the students that was receptive and was able to just verbalize feelings and talk through some things that we all left that room feeling pretty amazing, and to be honest, it was a huge victory and a win just because of the students that were involved. And uh, sometimes those things can, can go south and we try again or whatnot, but I have to say, I got actually a little embarrassed because I had a couple of the students leave and the one had to stay back just for a moment, and I started to get teary-eyed because I was so unbelievably proud of this young lady from over the years of knowing and how far this student had come. And being able just to say what she said and not re- just how the restorative circle went and the repairing of the harm and things like that was absolutely incredible. You know, and sometimes people come to me about, "How do you do it in middle school with this, that, and everything else?" Well, it's because of something that happened today. It was a rough day as far as that goes at the middle school. But then this happened in the afternoon and it, just one of those great reminders of why our staff, our teachers, everybody here worked so gal-darn hard at Wyndham Public Schools. It was absolutely incredible what that student did. I apologize for adding two minutes to this, but it was pretty moving today and I just wanted to share how amazing the students did when they got together and we uh, had that restorative circle. Thanks.
Thanks for sharing that. Any questions? Alright, we'll move on to the high school report. Mr. Joyce?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, of course, the Eagle Eye is linked there, all sorts of events coming up. May is a busy, busy month, of course, as we wind down the school year, so I'll hope to see everybody out and about it, whether it be a sporting events or uh, concerts coming up. Um, I know they were mentioned for next week, so we look forward to seeing everybody um, fill the school for those great events. It's the, the pop concert in the spring is always very well attended and really a nice upbeat one, so. It's fun to walk by the choir room and see all the kids dancing and sometimes I hop in the back and they don't know that I'm there and a couple of them be seeing me and they'll snicker a little bit, and then Miss Axford will get through the whole thing and do her spiel and then she'll be like, "Oh, I didn't know you were there." Like, that's okay, that's the point, you know, and I've just been dancing in three minutes and it's good to stop in there for that stress relief. And you could tell, the kids are smiling and laughing, they're, they're having a great time and they're, they're going all the way to the end here. That's the cool thing is, she's got them engaged with fun stuff all the way to the end and that is so, so awesome to see, so. Uh, this Friday is Awards Day, want to invite all of you to come enjoy us and join us for that. Um, of course, high school is eight-thirty A M. in the Nest. I know middle school is at two o'clock that afternoon, so if you're able to join us, uh, it's always great. I know the high school awards day really focuses on the seniors and their accomplishments, but we want to extend that invitation to all of you to join us in the Nest. Um, also, many of you helped with Eagle Achievement uh, with presentations here that took place a couple of weeks ago. So I want to thank you for all the time and effort in that, uh, and really our advisors, you're gonna hear from them in just a couple of minutes, so. Uh, thank you for your time uh, in, in judging, it means a lot to the kids. Uh, a shout out to all the people involved in prom this year. Um, I feel like it was just a fantastic event. Miss, Miss Nibby working with the students, uh, to our advisors at Chaparron, to that junior class parent group that spearheaded everything that happened after prom. The, the night went off just fantastically. And of course, it always helps when we have great weather, and we had great weather this year for prom, but it really was a great event. Um, I was there from start to finish and it, it was fantastic. Um, very tired the next day, of course, but we, we powered through, just a great positive night for the kids. They had a lot of fun and it was cool to switch things up this year and uh, the kids really responded. It was a, it was a fantastic night, so. Uh, CEO Trade Show was also a great event. Last Wednesday, we held that in the, the Community Center for the CEO class. Uh, thank you for, for those of you that came to that, and our new class will be starting here next fall. And uh, also just a note on CEO, we are gonna be looking for a facilitator, as our current facilitator has uh, has resigned the position, so we will be looking for a new facilitator for the CEO program for next school year, so uh, look for news on that coming. Uh, this Wednesday, we've got the senior trip going on, and then of course, um, all seniors who are in good standing, meaning they've got all their detention served due to attendance and things like that. Uh, they'll enjoy a little open campus next week on Wednesday thirty, Thursday, provided their teachers don't need them in class. And then of course, uh, I hope all of you can join us for graduation on Friday, May twenty-third in the Nest at seven o'clock. Um, please let Jamie know if, if, or myself, if you cannot make it. Um, and then all seniors who meet our requirements, um, or within one-half credit, get to walk, provided they're in good standing. And again, I've been very consistent with students on this, if they have unserved detention time due to, to absences, they won't walk potentially at commencement, so. Um, they, they will receive their diploma, provided they meet requirements, but commencement is a, is a privilege and if you haven't met all the uh, hours there, then, then you would potentially not walk at commencement, so. Um, our students are participating in Community Day on May twenty-ninth, uh, twelve-thirty-five release day, teachers will check out after that. And I just want to close also by thanking our teachers and our amazing uh, teaching staff. I get to sit down with seniors, we kind of do an exit interview, and I'm almost, I don't know, I'm probably eighty-five percent of the way through our seniors. Tomorrow, I'm hoping to finish up all of them, okay? And I, I hope you look at social media and, and see the, the posts we put out there on Facebook to celebrate a couple each day leading up to graduation. Um, one of the questions I, I've added this year is, uh, who on our staff has been helpful to you in your time at Wyndham Schools? And of course, they're very fixated on the here and the now, so we hear a lot of, you know, the senior teachers and stuff like that. Um, but there, there is a number of students who just say, "All the teachers, they're so helpful, all the teachers." They, they don't want to call out one or the other. Most will say, "All the teachers are so helpful with whatever I need. They will help me with whatever I need, whenever I need it, and they will put in time to help me do that." And so many of our seniors even mentioned teachers that they had in elementary, okay? So they remember that, they remember the middle school, they maybe don't remember middle school, I don't know, but uh, but they do. They do remember middle school and it all becomes a big blur, but when they're able to look back and reflect on their time as a Wyndham Eagle, they're pretty proud and it's pretty awesome to s- to hear our students acknowledge so many of our staff and all the help that they provide uh, day in and day out, just to help our students succeed, and it, it doesn't go unnoticed. Our students do notice. They may not say it every day, but when the time is there, they do acknowledge our staff for all the help that they provide, so. Uh, great way to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week last week and uh, I'm excited to hear from some of our students tonight about Eagle Achievement, so. Any questions?
Um, I just have a comment for all three of you, just for the outstanding school year, I really appreciate it. Um, one thing noted for all three of you guys is that you don't spend a lot of time in your office. You guys are very engaged with the students and out with the students. So I really appreciate that and thank you guys for being awesome leaders.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, if not, we'll move on to the superintendent report, Mrs. Frank.
Alright, good evening, board members. The May first enrollment data shows that we have a one-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-nine students for K-12 at Wyndham Area Schools. This is exactly the same number as the April first um, enrollment count. So you can take a peek at the attachment in the board packet if you're interested in comparing enrollment to prior years or from month to month. Um, as we've noted many times, uh, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm just gonna say that we are so fortunate to have the incredible teachers that we have. They give of themselves every single day to educate students and I thank them very much um, for being a part of the Wyndham team. After months of planning, preparation, listening, adjusting, and completing high levels of communication, the eve of Election Day is finally here. So all, all of you, please remember to vote tomorrow, May thirteenth, at the Community Center between the hours of eleven and eight. This journey began with user group meetings about a year ago. We then engaged the community task force to listen to their feedback and refine the facility needs. The scope of the project was defined and the community was surveyed. The board responded to this survey by res- by lowering the project from thirty-five million to twenty-seven and a half million. In effort to provide voters with an accurate information, a school webpage was created. Thank you, George. Just making sure you're listening. That resource has been used for all who want to learn more. The Citizen wrote a three-part series for the project and KDOM ran several interviews. In addition, we've completed a series of community meetings on April twenty-second, March twentieth, April thirtieth, and May seventh, and then staff meetings throughout. I've been a guest speaker at Kiwanis and the Service Club among many informal and group and individual conversations. We did all of this in effort to be transparent and visible um, throughout the process as we communicated the facility needs for the programming. The special election will be held tomorrow, May thirteenth, and we're looking forward to hearing the results. The results will be posted on the Wyndham Schools website following the election. And then lastly, I just want to um, say thank you to the principals. It was Principal Appreciation Day on May first. Now, of course, they never want to celebrate Principal Appreciation Day, but I think it's time to draw some attention to them. Uh, we have three of the most outstanding principals among us and I appreciate their hard work every single day. They are very dedicated to Wyndham Area Schools, they're passionate about helping students succeed, and they all three have a work ethic that is second to none. So thank you, Mr. Barfick, Mr. Nielsen, and Mr. Joyce for your commitment to Wyndham Area Schools. We appreciate you.
Alright. Um, number eleven, our Board of Education report. I don't think we have anything for tonight, is that correct, Mrs. Frank? Okay, we will move on to number twelve. And this is to approve Phase Two of the Environmental Center project proposed by the Deer Hunters Association. Uh, Mrs. Frank?
The Deer Hunters Association has done extensive work in the Environmental Center, including ridding the area of invasive grasses, and they will be planting native species um, very soon in the area to return natural beauty. Dennis Quarburg is here tonight to present Phase Two of the project. This plan includes upgrades to the walking path and installation of culverts so that the water can flow under the path instead of over the path. Um, he will seek board approval tonight um, to complete an application to secure funding for this project. Please welcome Dennis Quarburg to the podium.
Alright, thank you. And tonight with me is Jacob Gross, who has been in charge of, of doing a lot of the project, and chapter president Brian Burgling. So we're here to present this, that, the map that you have up. Being that the Environmental Center does fall into a wetland, we do have to get county and state approval to do any work in that area. This all started out sometime, I don't know, Jake, spring, late fall, after the flood and what we seen was going on with that area, and we decided, you know, there is something that's needed there and what can we do? Because when it rains and we get water flowing off from the big area, it goes across the path. Okay, so that means that in order to walk on the trail, I'm talking about the east-west trail, you have to get your feet wet. Okay, well, unfortunately, people don't like to have their feet wet, they don't want to wear boots to work, you can't get them to get out of their tennis shoes anyway. So we thought, let's look at that. So Jake put together some preliminary numbers, what he thought it was gonna cost to do the project, brought it to the chapter, and we said that, yes, this is something that we think that we need to have and we would like to do, let's get a quote and see what it's gonna cost, and then work forward. So we got a quote on what it is, that is also in the packet, but with that, it comes to the point where I know that there's an easement. I was wrong, I thought that the city owned a portion of that, but they only have an easement. Well, talking with the uh, street department and the water department, that's a sanitary sewer that runs through there so that they have to have access to clean out of that sewer. So they said, anything that you do to the trail, you have to put it in so that it has the capacity to carry the truck. Well, that truck is an extremely heavy truck. So I did a little research on that, I come up, in your packet is a, is a drawing on the uh, kind of the side view of the trail as well as the specifications for that culvert to home, to handle the weighting of that truck. Put that all together and then we contracted uh, didn't contract, but uh, I talked to WACA, which is the Wetland Area Conservation Act, which goes through the soil and water. Dave Buckland, who was retiring in, in June, was the administrator for that. Becky Buchholz is taking over for that, so I actually went to them and started the application. That application takes somewhere in a neighborhood of two months to complete. So we are here tonight asking the board to approve us to go forward with this project of upgrading the trail walking path for that area. All with the understanding that we get approval from WACA. Because if we don't get approval from WACA, we can't do anything. Okay, so that is what I'm, I'm asking you tonight is to give us the approval. Correct, Jake?
Correct.
Brian?
Yes.
So with that, I, I just want to touch a little bit on, on what was talked about, on what we have done so far. If you pop back to the map, please. Pop back to the map, uh, the left-hand little elbow that's up there, that has already been seeded. And then if you come straight down, there's a little square down there, that has already been seeded. We seeded that last year with native prairie grasses and some regular annual grasses that we'll be controlling for the, for the year. But that is all, that portion- But that is al- that portion is already done. So there is some work that, on the culvert down there that has to be done, that's within, within our grant, as well as the replacement of the one where it says new, that is the location of the new one. And in your, uh, handout, like I said, is information on the cross-section of the improvement, as well as the specs for the culvert, which they, is manufacturing that tells that, and then the bid price for the project. So, you want to add anything, Jake?
Just along with the culverts, we're also gonna re-install, uh, gravel along eight feet, I believe, wide along the whole trail, so about nineteen-hundred feet. In that map, the purple line, if you want to go back to it. Yep, that dark purple line through there is the trail as it sits. So it would be just improving the, um, accessibility of that for classes, so it's not so muddy in there. Encourage folks to use the area, because it is turning out to be a beautiful project and a very, I believe, beneficial opportunity for kids to learn about the outdoors and the environment we live in, so. But yeah, that's, that's the path looking down from the air. From the map too, those, those blue blobs, we'll say, um, as you can talk, I'll come pointing at this map. This blue blob, and underneath this checkerboard, that blue blob, that, that is basically where water gets held back from the trail, existing trail. So the trail's acting kind of like a little levee, so that's why these projects to put in a new culvert and work the other culverts is important for the longevity and use of this trail, so. Yeah, any questions? We're not gonna widen it, it, the existing crown of the trail is about eight feet right now. So we're just gonna follow the existing footprint, and then it'll be shaped and crowned so water can flow off, and it'll be nice compact, uh, gravel, so you can bike and walk and strollers, and everybody can, can use the, the area.
Is that just the east-west part?
That's the whole thing.
Or does it the whole thing?
Yep, the whole thing, you got it, yep. Yep.
Want to add, Brian?
Our last meeting, the chapter voted to fund it, so. You know, all these improvements, so.
I didn't talk about timing, but, uh, like I did say that the permit is gonna take approximately two months. Uh, the contractor, Cooper Bremsted, uh, said that it would, he figures that it would take him approximately a week to do that work. And our goal is to have this done before school starts. To interrupt, interrupt them as little as possible as we can. So there will be, there will be probably a week where, you know, if not the whole trail, part of the trail will be closed. Stand for questions.
Yes, thank you very much for everything you've done so far, and seeing to keep improving the area. Thank you.
Well, I'll just make a comment that I, I told, told Jamie earlier was that, uh, we are a five oh one C-three, which means we raise money to spend money. And one little other comment that I, that I heard from one of the executive directors of the Minnesota Deer Owners Association, probably twenty-some years ago, when he made the comment, he says, "You know, I never seen a fourteen-point buck run out of a bank vault." So, thank you very much for considering.
All right, this is an action item, so can I get a motion, please?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you guys for all of your work on this, appreciate it. You can go ahead and move forward. All right, number thirteen, we are going to hear about some Eagle Achievement projects. So we have James Burton here with a couple of his senior students to discuss it.
Evening, everyone. Uh, my name is James Burton, I teach the College Social Studies classes at Wyndham, and then, yeah, elective classes.
Hi, everyone, I'm Harriet Olsy, I'm a senior.
Hello, my name's Charlie Huska, I'm also a senior.
All right. We don't have to hide. Uh, so, believe it or not, this is actually the fifteenth year of Eagle Achievement. So it started back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. I was actually lucky enough to be part of the first class to complete Eagle Achievement back in two thousand ten. And the idea was started by Mr. Joyce, Mr. Hanson, and Ms. Olstead. And from there, it's kind of grown, evolved into what we see as today, but it's always maintained its root of being community engagement. Trying to give back to the community and really trying to teach the seniors what it means to be civically engaged.
A little, a little overview, um, there's three parts to Eagle Achievement. So first, there's a fifteen-hundred word to four-thousand-word essay slash research paper that we have to complete. Then the Community Engagement Project, and then at the end, a seven-to-ten-minute formal presentation to judges on our entire project.
So Mr. Joyce could probably speak to this better than me, uh, way back when, when it was started, but the idea of how Eagle, Eagle Achievement actually came in is it aligns very well with our social and English Minnesota State standards, all the benchmarks, and we found, or they found, that it just fits very well into what they have to do to graduate and to be good, active, civically engaged members of society, and that's really what we wanted to push is, how do we set these guys up for success afterwards with some of the twenty-first century learning? Being able to communicate with the public, collaborate with people outside of their friends or their teachers, and to really create something that has meaning to it.
So, um, part of Eagle Achievement is our research paper. So first, we have to kind of pick a topic that we want to research, um, and this is usually faced by our local community or globally. So we do our research proposal, and this is kind of where we explain where, you know, what we're gonna research. We explain causes and effects, um, it's very brief, but it's just kind of getting you warmed up with the topic. The annotated bibliography is probably the part where we get most familiar with our topic, because that's where we create the list of sources. Um, we really have to go through our websites and decide what information we want to include. And then finally, we have our, um, outline, rough draft, editing, and revision, and then our final paper, um, which kind of, again, helps us get better, um, introduced to our topic.
Then we have our actual, um, Community Engagement Project. Um, this is kind of the second half of the Eagle Achievement, and that's when you actually go out into the community and do your project. Um, you take, uh, information that you've learned from your research paper into this project, and it's about ten hours of work, just the project, not including the paper. No two projects are the same, everyone has to have a different project. They're developed through the community involvement and through community members, and it builds strong, lasting relationships between the school and the community.
Over the fifteen years, there's been a ton of successes, too many for us to name. Um, as I was sitting here and just thinking about it, with it being fifteen years, I mean, we are looking at, you know, thousands of projects at this point, and it's been a fantastic part of this community. Uh, it really has, and we've had everything from huge ones that have raised close to forty thousand dollars with Feed My Starving Children, to the fishing dock out at Bingham Lake was a part of an Eagle Achievement Project. You know, we've done the Star Spangled Banner Expo last year at the arena. They really are fantastic, and they come in a lot of different shapes and sizes, and we'll kind of look at some pictures from some of the past ones that we've seen. But the successes are hard to measure all at once, just because they have such large impact for so many different people. And it just has that continuity of being able to always impact.
So we have a little bit of a timeline here. So first of all, in September, and pretty much through the summer, you're able to think of your project and kind of come up with it. Some people can even do it early if they choose, but this is where we really brainstorm, um, our research idea, and we find a mentor, which is a really important part as well. In October, we just, or we decide on our topic and start to research. Um, November, we actually do our research outline, as well as our annotated bibliography, and then our rough draft. December's where that research paper is due. And then January, February, and March are kind of the physical project months. This doesn't always fall right here, but it typically does. And then April and May, um, is where we really complete that, and then we have our formal pre- presentations on, um, Eagle Achievement Presentation Night.
And I hit on this earlier, but, um, really, it's just a constant chance to reflect on what Eagle Achievement is and how we adapt it. So like when I started, uh, that two thousand nine, two thousand ten year, we focused heavily on the research side of things, and then for the projects, it was how to get engaged, uh, civically, as well as a little bit of your future careers. Things like that. Um, starting in two thousand fourteen, it became a graduation requirement. Um, prior to that, it was just, uh, requirements for the social and English classes alone. Since two thousand fourteen, we've had every senior completed an Eagle Achievement Project as part of graduating. From here, we continue to try to adopt, um, new ideas and adapt to the changing, uh, community and the students that we have to make sure that it reflects what these students need to be successful after school.
The student growth is measured through, like, individual conferences. Um, we, we meet with Mr. Burton and Mrs. Osborne throughout our whole project, formal assessments, like our Eagle, um, Presentation Night, uh, presentation feedback from the judges, giving us feedback on our presentation. Self-evaluation, we haven't completed this yet, but we will, um, next week? Tomorrow? Tomorrow, I guess. Uh, feedback from past graduates, and then feedback from support staff throughout.
Okay, so here's a few pictures of past ones. The one up in the, um, far left corner up there is, um, what I did this year. So I hosted a fourth-grade band day, um, along with a, um, kind of band instrument drive type of thing. Um, and this was probably the coolest thing that I got to do this year, I'm not gonna lie. A lot of scholarships and, um, things that I put on my resume and stuff, this has pretty much grabbed everyone's attention. They're, you know, they wonder what is that, and that's been really cool to talk about, um, as well as just experience myself. But as Mr. Burton said, it's been going on for almost fifteen years, or fifteen years. And there's some past ones at the bottom there, we have Jacob Johnson, um, in that, um, bottom right corner. And it's just, it's true, it's, it's a very big part of our high school thing, even though it is stressful, and we don't always want to do it at times, but it really is, um, very important. And when you put that on that resume or on that scholarship, it really gives you kind of a leg up over, um, over others, so, yeah.
Here's some more pictures, mine's also on the top left. I did a, um, gave financially disadvantaged K-4 students an Eagle tee, tee-shirt. Others include a blanket drive, um, May Day baskets for, um, cancer, and then, uh, a duck houses for the DNR, just, yeah.
Just some more ones that we've had in the past, where we had, uh, some students create or then donated to local businesses around town to try to beautify Wyndham a little bit, and have done some murals. Uh, we've had, um, a few years ago, all of the school supplies that were needed for the school were donated through an Eagle Achievement Project. Uh, them working with local business owners and things like that and the public to get it. We've had adaptive skating at the rink, uh, last year, just to try to offer those opportunities. And then, um, the bottom right one there is a book drive that they did where every elementary student had the opportunity to go home with at least one book, and some of the younger grades more than one book. And those, you know, given these chances, these kids can really show just how much they can actually do for the community here. That's pretty much it, unless you guys have any questions or anything for these guys.
Any questions or comments?
I'd say thanks, uh, for presenting and heading this on, and hope it, um, happens for decades to come. And we want them to be successful after school, and being involved with the community, no matter where they are, what they do, is, is very important, so, thank you, guys.
I guess my question is, uh, did you, for your, your project, did you think about it through four or five years to come up with it? Or was it all spur of the moment, or did you hear somebody say, "Boy, I wish somebody would do this"?
So mine came about from our middle school band director, Mrs. Swanson, she saw the need and came to Mia and Morgan, I did it with a friend. Um, and that was kind of the way that that came about, but I didn't actually know what I wanted to do, so. But I think it's funny how it just kind of comes about, and you, you figure it out, and obviously, we have great teachers that help us out as well, so.
Mine kind of, well, we get, the teachers talked to us about junior year, like at the end of junior year before explaining this project to us, so that we can start getting ideas throughout the summer, and that's when I kind of started thinking, and with the help of my parents, I, they really helped me come up with this idea, and that's how mine came about. But like Harriet, I really had no idea what to do.
Mr. Burton, what was your project?
Um, so I actually worked with Mrs. Hannahfeld, uh, and she helped me to basically figure out some different strategies with education. I ended up teaching, uh, you know, in the Civil War to a group of eighth graders, so.
I got to work with Charlie a little bit on her project, and I thought it was pretty cool to make sure that every kid had a Eagle tee-shirt to wear, because every kid deserves to wear, have at least one item to wear on those Eagle Pride Days, so thank you for your work on that. Any other questions or comments?
And we'll give a shout-out to Harriet's too here, because I had a fourth grader who did band day, and he was all smiles that day after school. He wanted to, he wanted to play all the instruments, though, and we can't afford that, so I did tell him he had to pick one, because Harriet's Drive wouldn't fund them all, so. It was really great.
All right, thank you guys very much, appreciate you guys coming in. All right, we're gonna move on to item number fourteen. This is, we are going to approve a resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the Teaching Contract of Paul Eickley, a probationary teacher. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move the pres- resolution forward.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, um, we're going to vote, and this is a resolution, so we'll start with Lynn. Barb?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bree?
Matt?
And myself, yes, uh, resolution passes. Number fifteen, we are going to the Review Policy seven-ten and the accompanying res- resolution. Um, and Bree is going to take the lead on this.
The Policy Committee and Teresa and Superintendent Frank met to go over policies, it, like we do. Um, but seven-ten caught our attention because it, it pertains to transportation of students by district staff. Um, and Wyndham has, you know, a situation where we can be limited by transportation at times, and we cannot offer it for all of our activities that we provide children in the community. So there are many, many times in which school staff are acting as parents and providing transportation for maybe teammates of their children. And we were just curious how that impacted, um, or how that pertained to this policy, because we didn't want to limit teachers from being able to do that, but we also wanted to protect the district. So Superintendent Frank did quite a bit of legwork to contact MSBA and our attorneys to s- to see what, um, the best course of action would be. And, um, we, it was the attorney's recommendation that we just have a resolution, um, that it basically just states that they are not acting as school staff when they're transporting other children, in which the school district is not offering transportation options. Does that basically cover it? So, there we go.
All right, any questions on that? Okay, this is informational, so we'll vote on it at the next meeting. Number sixteen, approve Title One Family Engagement Policy. Mrs. Frank and Mrs. Pepper.
All right, the Title One Family Engagement Policy is just an annual requirement that we approve every year. It has to be submitted annually with the Title One Application, and we're getting It has to be submitted annually with the Title One Application, and we're getting geared up to submit that in later in June or later this summer. We'll see how the timing works. The only changes are the dates, which have been highlighted in yellow.
All right, this is an action item, so can I get a motion, please?
I will move this forward.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seventeen, we are going to approve Policies four oh seven, four twenty, four twenty-three, five thirty, and seven oh one. These were discussed at the previous board meeting a month ago. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on these policies? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number eighteen, we are going to approve the Band and Choir Trip for the twenty-twenty-seven to Disney World. We heard about this at the last board meeting, which seems like forever ago. Anyways, can I get a motion for this, please? All right, approve the Band and Choir Trip for the twenty-twenty-six to Disney World, so. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move this forward.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number nineteen, we are going to approve the Cheerleading Proposal to Compete in Two Competitions during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Can I get a motion for this, please?
Move approval?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving right along. All right, so we are going to approve the Apple Lease for Teachers' Laptops. Mrs. Frank.
New MacBooks are purchased for teachers every three years, and we are in our third year of use on these laptops. So, our Director of Technology, Ryan Christopher, reached out to Apple to get two quotes, one to buy the devices outright with a one-time payment and the other with a lease-to-own payment over three years. So, Apple offered us a really good deal, so the lease-to-own option over three years is at zero percent interest, so it's the same cost either way. So, we're gonna go ahead and do the lease-to-own over three years, and anything else Peggy that was, yeah, that's pretty, that pretty much sums it up.
All right, can I get a motion for this, please?
I move approval.
I second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number twenty-one, we are going to approve the Adventure Club Pay Schedule effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Peggy, Mrs. Pepper, and Mrs. Anderson.
I'll just take this one real quickly, because we just started working on some of this stuff, so. Once again, we're asking you to prove this in advance because they're doing interviews right now for some summer positions, and so it's always like to know that what we can tell people we're gonna pay them when they do it. So, that's it. We're asking for a three percent increase over last year's. We've been three percent like for the last several years, it's pretty much our standard raise for that. There is one new thing that I wanted to talk about is the Great Start Compensation Grant. Back in the spring of twenty twenty-three, the legislature added to the Department of Health and Human Services, this compensation grant to help providers that do daycares, it can be a in-home daycare, it could be, you know, a certified daycare center, which we are, and it started in October twenty-three. So, that adds anywhere an additional two dollars and forty-four cents to over three dollars and twenty-three cents per hour to those above wages. And we have to submit, and we actually just did it, I think, today. We we submit our hours, we submit the number of students that we are, we are looking over, and we submit the number of days we are open, and it calculates this amount, and they say, okay, we are gonna give you two hundred and fifty dollars for the month of April. And then what we do is, once we get that money, we pay it directly out directly to the staff. So, and that's one of the requirements, is that everything, there's certain requirements, and we have just chosen, we're going to do that to raise the wages of the staff. Nothing is kept back for anything else. It goes directly to them, so that's hopefully good to help, you know, retain our employees that do work at Adventure Club as well as recruit new ones when positions are filled up. And so, I can't tell you, I haven't heard anything about when this compensation support payment program is gonna end. I'm hoping it continues to go on, but as we all know, sometimes the legislature things happen, but I never think like that, so, so that's actually really great, so I just wanted to put a shout out to that, so. Are there any questions? Holly, did I need to?
All right, can I get a motion, please?
I move approval.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same, or all those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Number twenty-two, we are going to approve the CY twenty-twenty-four Forfeited Flexible Spending Account Dollars of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Mrs. Pepper.
I did this prior to when we started our training, so, you know, it's hard to ask her to talk on something that she really hasn't done. So, we offer flexible spending accounts to our employees for both medical and dependent care. It's run by the calendar year. Once December thirty-first, two hundred and twenty-four ended, they had approximately three months to submit receipt, receipts to get reimbursed and things like that. At the end of that three-month period, we wait another thirty days for the appeals to run out, and then after that, if there's any money left, so that means if they had money deducted from their paycheck to use for one of those that they didn't get reimbursed, it goes back to the district. Some years were winners, some years were not. It just, and, but we just need a motion and approval from the board to do this journal entry on the finance side to clear out the account balances so they're back to zero for the new year when it starts again, so. Once again, this is something annual that you have done in the past. Numbers obviously always change, but the same rationale is behind it, so.
All right, can I get a motion for this, please?
Move approval?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Are there any additional items for the board?
I just have one reminder that we do not have a work session this month because May twenty-six falls on Memorial Day, so our next board meeting will be the regular board meeting in June. We do have a special meeting on May twenty-first at five thirty in this room.
And I think I've said this before, Angie, but I want to shout out, we, Teresa and I stayed till we came here tonight to finalize all of the absentee voting. We had two hundred and ninety-five ballots absentee. Shout out to Teresa, well, and Holly helped you, and so did Jana. I mean, it's a group effort, but, you know, we had to make sure everything balances, everything's accounted for, but two hundred and ninety-five and how many were today? So, you can imagine how much work we get done. Very little, but, you know. Once again, a big shout out, Teresa did the majority of it, and with support, Holly's been a great help as well as Jana, Rafferty, because she's, we always gotta tag team it, so.
Thank you, Teresa, for all your work. Appreciate it. All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you and enjoy the rest of the beautiful evening.